Well, let's get started. It's.
Recording in progress.
The Hamilton Planning Board, a regular meeting for Wednesday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four is now called an order. My name is Amel Dahlquist. I'm the clerk and will be the acting chair in the absence of Marnie Crouch, who is the regular chair. So. She, I think, is not zooming in tonight, so I'll, I'll direct the meeting. First order of business is to call a roll call. Patrick Norton.
Here.
Jonathan Poor.
Jonathan Poor, present.
Bill Wheaton, I understand, will be a little bit late, fifteen minutes late, but he's coming this evening. Matt Hamel is here.
Present.
Amel Dahlquist is here as well, and Patrick Refit, Director of Planning and Inspection Services, is also here.
Mr. Chair, could I just make people aware that the library closes? And we'd like to have people enter and exit from the side door here, so we don't disrupt their security.
Got it.
Thank you. Any other ground rules?
We'll start out with just that one.
First of all, it's going to be our regular home for the next, well, unforeseen future or an unforeseeable future due to the renovations that are going to happen at the town hall. But we're pleased to be here, and this is our first meeting, so welcome. The first item on the agenda, I think what I'd like to do is put that second, wait till Bill Wheaton gets here. He's the one who sort of initiated that discussion point. So what I would like to do is take, take up the comprehensive plan update as the first item on the agenda. Can we see the slide? That's it. Yeah, it'd be a series of slides. As you may or may not know, the the town is beginning a downtown revitalization effort, and we've put out, I'm representing the planning board on the the selection committee and also advisory committee on that. And the town has put out an RFQ and got four responses. We narrowed it down to two and then interviewed the final two candidates, and we unanimously selected the firm that was chosen to be commissioned, and the firm is UTILE, U-T-I-L-E from Boston. Patrick was part of the selection group as well, and he can attest to anything I'm saying here. So I think we're very fortunate. It's a very good firm, and we thought that they, they were very comprehensive in their responses to their tasks and their outline of their schedule going forward. Our deadline will be to complete everything by town meeting of next spring, two thousand and twenty-five. So we're just initiating that whole process. We had one kickoff meeting on the first of May with UTILE here in Hamilton. And it was Patrick, myself, Rick Mitchell, and Joe Dumloitz, who were at the, part of the selection committee. We were at that meeting with them. As a kickoff meeting, we were trying to get, just establish sort of an operating procedure with them. They had put together an agenda or a schedule, and you can see a modification to it here because the town had requested that we set up work, a workshop or advisory committee in lieu of stakeholders for the reason primarily that it's difficult in town to get a number of people to turn up and to have a number of stakeholders might be kind of challenging. So we thought that a single large group would be sufficient to get through the initial stages. And you can see on the top line, the advisory committee will have four meetings, one in May, one in June, and one in August, and one in October. Now, what the town has been doing the last couple of days is to put together a list of folks here in town, either members of some boards, but who, who would be very helpful in representing sort of a broad spectrum of town. Town experiences, I guess, because we, we're looking for somebody from, we'll have the planning board to be represented, of course, but the historic preservation and certainly downtown business will be represented. We're looking for. Okay, how's that? Is that better? Thank, thank you for commenting on that. Half of the, we're looking at fifteen people, and six of them are actually residents in town. We've come up with a, with a preliminary list. It's just going to be, the individuals will be contacted to see if they are interested in, in following this. Again, it's only four meetings. There'll be Zoom meetings. There'll be ninety minutes each, so a total of six hours. But I think there'll be additional meetings that we meet separate from UTILE, the consultant, just to kind of get organized as a committee and also to focus on the next meeting for the purpose of making it more efficient and productive. So if we can, we're asking UTILE to give us an advanced notice on the agenda and what topics they want to cover, so we can prepare in advance. So there'd be additional meetings outside of the meetings with the consultant. But this again is a timeline, and it, this is a very complicated project. As you know, there are, there are a couple of issues here that need to be sorted out that some are contentious and some are less contentious, and we want to, in the end, create a form-based code as the, as the final code in the downtown district that in and of itself is probably, will require a lot of education here in town for people to get up to speed on what that is, but it's really an excellent tool to use. So the schedule, the way it is now is the, if you can look at the map, the advisory committee will meet four times through October. Then it's sort of handed off to the planning board to do four meetings, which is labeled code refinement, public hearings up into March, and then the final draft and so forth for eventually, then a public engagement for the April town meeting. There'll be two large or very important public visioning workshops, one in July, one in September. Timing may not be ideal, but given that our deadline is fixed in April, two thousand and twenty-five, and the amount of time taken to complete each one of these tasks, which is quite a bit of work, it, you know, it falls in, in July. So this is sort of, in a nutshell, kind of the, the schedule. It's a much more detailed task schedule that's developed here that we won't get into in this meeting. Go to the next slide. So the advisory committee, UTILE drafted up this, what they would consider to be a good drafting committee. And they had five items there on the left, typical advisory committee role. So they're looking for a, a body that will advise them on key issues and priorities. Number three, coordination and alignment. Number four, outreach, communication, and increasing awareness. And five, review and provide constructive feedback. Now, UTILE will be facilitating each one of these Zoom meetings, but they we're trying to get them there in person, at least on, on the first meeting, so that you know, this, and this advisory board really does need a couple of meetings, I think, in advance of the first meeting to get organized and see how it's going to function as a group. The, the former arrangement was to have stakeholder and community partner interviews, and again, that was, that was deemed by the town representatives to be, we'd like, we wanted to swap that out for the advisory committee that would stick with, stick with the project and stay involved through the, the visioning part of it. So this really is in two pieces. The first one is visioning what, what we want the town to be. That's number one. That's the first half of the project. And then, secondly, it's how do you codify that to be somewhat certain you're going to get that result? And that's the tricky part. That's more technical, but the fun part is the visioning part where it's, it should be a matter of what is the ideal in your mind in terms of what the town should be, the downtown area. So, and that's going to vary a lot from different perspectives. But that, very simply, is how it's set up to work. Now, as, as these unroll, the different topics will come up and we'll try to keep you up to date. UTILE is going to create a website that you can track to see what work has been done, and they'll be doing that within a month or two. Patrick, you think, is that roughly? So here again, the first, for example, the first advisory committee meeting will focus on confirming a study area and broad goals for the process, as well as validating the proposed approach to outreach and engagement. Again, the primary focus here is to create the downtown that you want, or we want as a community. And there are some complicating factors. As you all know, there's the, what's required now by the state, which was not our asking, and we didn't ask for this, but it's a three A that we do have to comply with, the MBTA, community housing. And there's a potential for the Winthrop School site to become available. That's not certain by any means, but it's you know, it, that's on the, it's, it's a further complicating factor in that they're very strong items to, to be discussed.
Amel, do you want to, you want to go through the slides and then ask, or do you want engagement during the course of the slides? Do you want everyone to wait till the end, or?
Yeah, why don't I go through that if you want, I know you want to make some comments on, on that particular issue, but and I'll address that later than, yeah, once you move. Well, fifteen will be the maximum number. We've, we've set up fifteen names for people to participate. That was the number UTILE asked us not to exceed because it gets a little bit unwieldy with. Well, right now, there are six residents out of the fifteen, and then there are, I believe, four board members, commission members as part of that. Other, there's a developer, so people in the private sector. HTC is going to be represented by an individual, and.
Has the developer been identified?
For this? Yeah. He hasn't been notified yet, so I'm going to wait on that, on these names. But we're looking for a broad spectrum, so if he's not identi, if he's not willing to take it, then we'll, we'll, again, look for a replacement in that area.
I think it'd be great to get more involvement in who's selected to be on, because it's a very important role for executing the goals of this.
Right.
I don't think it's the UTILE's edict to choose. I think.
No, no.
Well, that's what I was going to ask.
Like, is Harbor like community the developer, or is, you know, who's the developer? I'm not comfortable with it being a secret.
No, no, the developer is a local resident, so we're looking for that expertise from within the community, and nobody, nobody is conflicted in terms of what they're working on or, or.
But yeah, that was my question too, Pat, was like, I know you said people were being contacted, but what was that process of who decided who's going to be asked?
Like, I'd be like to be on the board, or.
On that committee, yeah, and so I was just curious on how that, and I think, I mean, if anyone was paying attention on Monday for the select board meeting, I think it's important for us, as much as we can, to be I'm assuming we have six residents who are just residents, and then every, the other people who are on this are also residents, right, because they're on different boards, so I'm assuming most of those fifteen are going to be.
Everyone lives in town.
Okay, great. And then the next question would be, because I know people are going to ask me this, is like, who decided who's on that list, who's being asked? So I think that was kind of what maybe Pat was getting at as well.
Yeah. Transparency, for this thing to be successful, you can't choose, UTILE can't choose.
And I mean, and then if you watch the situation with the school committee, there was a, that's something right now that a lot of people are wondering how people got chosen to be on that school building committee. So I just feel like, given what's kind of been happening in town, I think understanding how that process is happening is going to be an important thing for us to explain to the community.
Well, all right.
I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot. I don't know.
No, I'm not on the spot. I, and again, Patrick has been part of all of this, Patrick Refit has been part of all these discussions. It was the, it was a selection committee of four, four people.
Okay, so the four of you who chose.
We have a group of individuals that, you know, they live in town, they contribute to town. Some of them are business owners, some of them are long-term property owners in downtown. It's a flexible list. It wasn't hard and fast. The town manager asked Amel, myself, Rick Mitchell, for a group of people that we felt would represent the town in a, a fashion that it was comprehensive and also those that are some who have already spoken against some of the things that are now taking place in the, the Facebook sphere.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I'm just, I may love everybody on the committee. I'm just saying, like, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying that there's anybody on the committee I wouldn't want. I just I'm trying to figure out how do we navigate, because it's, there's just a lot going on in town.
Oh, yeah. Right, but there were deliberate choices for people who are opposed to particular parts of this, this whole project. They were chosen to be on the committee for that reason, that the real, the real test is going to come in April, whether it gets voted or not. So we are hoping to go through a very strong educational process to get people up to speed in terms of what they're going to be voting on. UTILE had no involvement. They do not want to discuss, they don't want to be involved in who, who is sitting on, on these meetings.
Oh, good. Yeah, yeah.
No, because they don't know anybody here in town, and because they have no, no reason to choose anybody particularly. So they deliberately stayed out of it. There was not, not, not any of their doing on this. This was our best shot, and, and, you know, between Patrick, Joe, Rick, who have really lived in the town a number of years now, or been, know, a lot more people frankly than I do here in town, produced a list which I really, you know, thought was really comprehensive. And again, I was looking for a broad spectrum. I looked at particular professions that I thought would be suitable. You know, again, people in the planning world, people in the design world are important, as well as business owners, economics, historic preservation, those are, will be represented, as well as residents at large who bring another perspective or a different perspective to it. So it's not, we did not try to stack this in any way.
Right.
And I know that's, I can say that, and you're not, you may believe it or not, but.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking the questions that I know I'm going to get, not that I, yeah, I, like I said, I could love everybody on there, and I could look at the list and think it's great personally. I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out. And again, this isn't something we've done before, so then, you know, is that under the purview of the planning board to make that decision, or is it a small commit? I think people don't know, and I don't know. I'm like new to how.
It's not really a planning, it's not the planning board that's doing this, you know, it is this committee that was selected by, from.
Multiple different boards.
Yeah, and I, you know, frankly, I was chosen, I, I'm sure.
Lucky you.
Yeah, because my background in architecture and town planning for twenty to thirty years, so I can bring something to it that, you know, anyway, that's the.
If people could volunteer to be on it, are they going to, is there involvement that's going to happen? Because I know that there were people who were proactively contacting Joe.
Yeah, they, he mentioned that. Sorry, yeah, can you, can you use the lectern if you're going to speak? My error. I should, you have to speak into the microphone like I do, so.
I was just going to say that I know people have stepped forward to, to participate, and it sounds like it's a pretty structured group, you know, where you're trying to get all the different industries and the different stakeholders and stuff on it. And when people volunteer for it, I mean, they might think that they have something to contribute to, so I hope that the people that have stepped forward can be on it, even though it might be more than fifteen, just so you get an engagement, you know, for the people that have really.
Well, this, this will be a highly public meeting, and so people are certainly entitled to attend, and there'll be public comment period during any one of these meetings.
So the advisory committee will be meeting in a public forum?
Yes.
Yes.
So all those meetings are public?
Correct.
It's just they're sitting, like you guys, behind the tables and talking. Is that, is that sort of how it's envisioned?
Well, yes, probably, you know, just.
So input can be received, I guess, is.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Could you also give your name and address for a let's taker?
Yeah, sorry, Deb Safford, forty-six Maple Street.
So just while we're talking on that, I had a couple, so this is subject to open meeting laws, the meetings that we have? Is that, does anybody know? Yeah?
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay, good. And then, and then citizens would be able to be on the Zoom?
Oh, of course.
Okay. All right. I'm just trying to like, again, because it's not a regular meeting, I'm trying to understand.
No, this is going to be designed in public. It's not, it's not.
Oh, I would, yeah, I mean, I'm just asking, because I don't know how it all works.
No, those are instrumental questions that I think are helpful to people who may be listening either now or later for informational purposes.
Right, and a lot of.
Advment purposes.
And I think the public's engaging in a new fashion, and they're not all up to speed on how things work, so I have had a number of conversations trying to help people understand processes, and I don't understand them all sometimes, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of misinformation out there too about what these different things are, so.
Yes.
Sorry, can I just ask one more question? Can we have a commitment that there's no one on the advisory committee that can have a beneficial gain from any of the outcome?
That's absolutely right.
So no one that can develop it, no one that can sell their property, no one that can?
Well.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know about selling your property, but.
You know what I mean, like if, if they're in that zone, especially when it comes into the three A, but I think if we, if we have a commitment, I feel much better if we have people who are there who aren't actually going to benefit themselves through the decisions.
That would be conflict of interest, of course, though.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're not going to invite that, no. Any other questions? Anybody on the line? Let me just wrap up this, this part of the discussion then. Next slide.
Patrick, didn't you have a comment or question?
I think on, I read through the slides already. I'll let Amel get through the slides, but thank you. Or this, Patrick?
No, I'm good.
Next slide is one of the slides that UTILE presented at their kickoff meeting. These were questions that they just asked us, and we created a response to it that I'll go over in a little bit of detail, just again, just to update you on this. But these were the, one, two, four questions, or four different items that they wanted to question. What current challenges and needs for Hamilton can process, can this process help to address? How can Hamilton benefit from increased housing density and variety? What political live wires do we need to carefully navigate together to be successful? Are there any backstories to specific sites within the study area that we should know about? And what kinds of public processes have been most effective for Hamilton in the past? What aspects of those processes are worth emulating in this one? One thing I will say about UTILE, they, they've represented, I think it's four commuter rail communities, Patrick, and at least three or four adjacent community folks who are engaged in the three A process. They're very familiar with that process and how it works, and we wanted to get a, a community or a consultant that had that sort of broad knowledge and working relationship with the EOHLC as as an organization. And again, I, Patrick can verify, everybody was satisfied with their responses to that. They don't come with an agenda. They're, they're planners, and they're really going to be looking to the town for input in what to do. So, you know, I believe that to be true.
Have they taken a look at the master plan study yet? Have they been offered?
I haven't asked them what documents. They've been given all of the documents that we, we have today. We, we've given them a list of all the things that are, are available online, for example.
One, one thing I've found, they're not afraid to look at the town's website. They have fully discovered it, and they have our information, past and present, which is always helpful.
They are very quick to understand what the problems are. They, I'm surprised, you know, how good they, they really are, I think. Go to the next slide.
One of the important reasons why they were selected is because they have a really strong background in working with small communities like ours, which we really felt was important because they're going to understand the sensitivities that a community like Hamilton has.
They, they did a form-based code for Littleton, so it was a similar process there, a community roughly the same size as Hamilton, Littleton, Mass. That's one project that they gave us the code on for. That's one project that they gave us the code on for, in the RFQ, for the, for the services. I just put down some of our responses. Again, this was from the selection committee. I did not talk with the planning board about this, but we, we've been trying to move this along, so we can stick to a really tough, hard schedule. But, so the, the current challenges, the first question, what we wrote was the Winthrop school site may become available, thereby presenting significant economic opportunities for the town. Number two, compliance effort, efforts with MBTA community housing with a half-mile radius from the train station has a deadline of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. General desire to promote downtown development that provides fiscal benefits while preserving and enhancing community character. And then finally, they're combining or dovetailing these activities and developing them holistically will yield more overall benefits than looking at it in fragments over time.
Sorry, Amel, this, this is where I did wanna step.
Yeah, sure.
When we discussed this form-based code process.
Yeah.
And talked about spending money to engage an architect and developer, whatever these town planners are, I was like totally against the goal of complying with three A or developing Winthrop. And it's number bullets, number one and two. When you list a challenge, it also represents to people, especially the folks that are town developers, town planners, the opportunity. You're, you're, if, if this was the first step in the process, I would have been much more aggressive against the effort. I think, I know, I sat next to you guys and I said, I will not support this if the goal is to focus on compliance with three A or developing Winthrop. It's bullets number one and two. UTIL have represented other towns, like you said, and they, I fear, were chosen because of their ability to comply with zoning related to three A. And even you stated, the beginning of this meeting, our goal was to look for how we could comply with three A. I think it's the wrong approach. I think the approach we need to be taking is how we do, this co, form-based code analysis, it was described to me as how we protect zoning. We are doing the opposite. I am a hundred percent against any goal or bullet representing the three A. I would rather spend the money on John Witten and, and lawyers to fight the, the three A requirements than architects on how to comply with it. I'm like, out of my mind with these three-two bullets. And it's the reason I canceled my work dinner tonight to come to this meeting. We've changed the meeting times three times the last three months.
Yeah.
It's difficult with, it's difficult, but I, I stepped out of the way to make sure I was here. It's also showing up in the master plan, for crying out loud. The same language, how to comply with three A, how to develop Winthrop, master plan, and this effort.
All right, let me, let me, hold it, hold it. Let me, let me just respond to you.
With how this is already started.
Okay.
Before it's even started.
Great, okay. Now, you're entitled to do, you feel, whatever you want.
I wanna be involved in it because the goal is wrong.
Let me just say, this whole process about revitalizing the downtown began before we knew anything about the three A project. So, for, that's, that's, that's a side issue that should not be brought up now. What happened was the MBTA communities was dropped in our lap. This is not anything we asked for, and we have to deal with it. It is the law.
We don't have to. We can fight it.
Well, I think we have to, yeah.
We have to do it.
You can sue it.
We have three options.
We should not comply. We should not comply.
We can, we have three options, maybe more, but this is how I see it. We have guidelines. We have the actual law, which is more, not as specific as guidelines. And if, if you read the law, it says, the original law had three buckets of money that you couldn't apply for grants for. I have asked our state representative four times now where the fourth bucket came in, and if it ever went through the legislative process, because there now is a fourth bucket of money that they're saying we can't have access to. Generally speaking, Hamilton doesn't get any of this grant money.
Right.
And for me, I just want us to take a deep breath and step back and say, is this a good choice for the town?
We may.
And, and, so it could end up in a lawsuit. I'm, I'm just saying, like, I wanna like reel way back and say, does this make sense? What is the du, upside of doing this? Are we gonna be a net positive revenue or negative?
I, I wanna, I'll take your, okay, okay, please. The three of you at this stage, you know, what I want you, what I'm asking you to do is keep an open mind to doing this. And once we go through this process, thi, this commission's been signed, it's launched at this stage. The goal is revitalization of downtown.
I'm open, so I'm open to the form-based code. What I'm saying is what I'm hearing from people in town, people are very concerned.
The language we use is important.
Yes.
What, the way we write things is important. The goals and the language we use are important. The way you speak is important. When you say comply with three A, it's not the goal.
The question.
Goal is not to comply.
The question was what current, what current challenge, what current challenges and needs are, does face Hamilton?
Talking about what you say. I'm not talking about, it's also what you're writing.
He asked what the three, what the three, you know, what, what are the challenges? These are the challenges. These are the top two challenges. That we know there's a lot of resistance here in town.
That's not the goal.
I'm asking you to keep in mind, look at the positive thing about what could happen in downtown. And if you don't like it, you don't vote for it, you know, down the line. But you, you ought to keep an open mind to this whole process. Because it, a couple of things that are happening, and it might go down, because the form-based code is new to, new to people. There's a long education process, and I'm glad you're gonna be attending some of these meetings, cause, you know, I think all of us can learn something. And I'm not driving any agenda here. It was, it's a town decision not to challenge, not to try to sue the state for, to challenge the MBTA community housing.
But who made, who's made that decision? You said that the town has decided not to pursue that. I haven't heard anybody in any office say that. And I'm trying to understand, because the feedback I'm getting from people who are very concerned.
People have to know what they're voting against, and that's what we're only gonna give them. And you can vote against this in the end. There's nothing wrong with that.
I know, but what you just said was, the town has decided not to fight it. And I haven't heard that out of anybody. I haven't heard that from the select board.
Right now, it's the law. It's the law that you have to comply.
It is not. It is not. It's not.
You lose four grants. You can't apply for four grants if you don't. So, that's the, but it made it, the what you just said.
It's more than four.
Okay, Amel, what you just said made it sound like the town's made a decision. And I don't know how the town has made that decision.
Actually, Beth, I did hear on Monday, the town made a decision. We decided that we're not gonna comply, because compliance is due by the end of this year, and we're not gonna vote until April of next year. So, I think we actually chose, we're not complying.
Right.
Cause we're not gonna vote till next year.
The, the key, the key item here is that the residents of this community are going to either vote it up or vote it down. And that's the important, yeah, mountain that we've got to climb. And it's, you know, the process that we're working through between now and then is considering possibilities that have the potential to work with our community. Or in some instances, I think the community's going to find they don't work with what our needs and, and desires are. So, we're very early in a process that we really wanna get people engaged and have the benefit of people's points provided through that.
Can I just share one thing before you speak? I think maybe Patrick is trying to say, Norton, that we need to be tentative with our language and not one way. We don't even have to say one way or another. But I think we're committing by saying the town has made a decision, and I don't, if you said, if somebody said, well, then who made the decision? That's what I'm thinking. That's gonna be the question I get when I go home tonight. Who made the decision? And I don't know who to point and say, select board, town manager, planning board. I don't know who made the decision. So, when we say words like that, that's where a lot of the.
Well, let's.
Misperceptions are.
Let's look at the first bullet. The Winthrop school site may become available. That's not.
It's not a goal, this effort. It's not a goal.
It doesn't say it's a goal.
It's listed bold number, it is. A challenge is an opportunity.
This is not a productive discussion.
I, I don't wanna, it is, because we're now engaged in being transparent, and you developed this on your own and we get to discuss it. I agree with Patrick one hundred percent. We endeavor, it's just the start. So, it's really, the, a project is most important at the start.
Right.
Because we don't want, we don't want to, well, if the town doesn't like it, they'll vote it down. No, we don't wanna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year to just go off on a tangent by ourselves and end up in a place that the town doesn't want. We wanna start with the right goals. A form-based code that protects the downtown and preserves what we want.
Right.
That is what we want, and that's what you want too, and a hundred, a hundred percent. But I just wanna say, the language that you start with is gonna be, like, for sure, the goal number one, develop a goal. Goal number one, be transparent and develop a goal. If we start off on the right foot, we may actually get to a point where we resolve this in a way that the town wants.
When.
And it will get approved.
When folks are ready, I have a framework that I'd like to offer up, but I'd like to let people finish their conversations, and I'd like to offer up a framework.
Do you have a question or?
Comment, please. Linda Preston, two eighty-eight Highland Street. As soon as I heard the discussion begin, and I wrote a quote, three A we have to comply with, it made me feel as though this is a done deal. There's a predetermined outcome. And where do we fit as citizens in town? And so, I agree with the comments that say, let's get off on the right footing to begin with. Let's engage and say it in a way that we're open to consideration. We'll look at the benefits, but we'll also look at what are the issues? What are the problems we could create? So, we're gonna be open-minded, and you'll get much more people working together. Thank you.
So, may I just pause and take, that's a great segue into a framework, if I may offer it up. So, I hear both, both comments here, and I've been thinking about this for some time now. And it is true, what, what Amel said, this started off just a form-based code, and the other piece was dumped in our lap. And I think what has happened is, right now, the two subjects are being blurred together. And in my, in my view, and my opinion, and the framework I'm going to offer, is they are not a blur. They're two buckets, okay? So, and you can start exploring these two buckets completely separately, completely separately. You can look at each through its own lens. So, Amel mentioned, where does the town wanna go? There's the visioning for the form-based code. There are going to be, I will happily eat my words publicly, there are going to be a few overlaps that are beneficial that'll come out of the three A process. Prove me wrong, but I, I predict that there will be. You can just take that, you know, you cannot believe that at this point and just wait to see how the process unfolds. But I can, I can pretty much count on there, there being some overlaps that are beneficial. There may be over, there may be conditions of the, of three A that are really not beneficial. In fact, in all likelihood, there will be. However, if what you do is you explore each of the scenarios as a separate bucket, completely separate in their discussion, initial discussion, then you overlay them, almost like a matrix, almost like a spreadsheet. Here's what three A wants, here's what the, here's what our town vision wants, and you put them together. It's gonna tell a story. And that story's gonna be really transparent. It's gonna be really clear to everybody what that story is. And people can then, with authority, either accept or reject very clearly each of the pieces of the policy. I do strongly believe, if we do not separate those two processes, this is doomed. This process is doomed. So, I am going to strongly advocate that the advisory committee adopt this and that UTIL adopt this to keep the, the, keep the subjects separate until such times as it's time to overlay them and see how they fit. Then, then folks have the opportunity to engage where they want to engage, say what they need to, to say, and, and there'll be absolute transparency about which interest or which goal or which motivation fits in which bucket, and then you can see where they overlap or don't overlap. And if they don't overlap at all, you can reject three A, but then you've done it with authority. But at this point, there's no authority to do that, because you don't have enough information. That's all.
Any other comments?
Another question or comment. I, I think with the bucket approach, I would put the school in a bucket like that as well. Because if we just salved over that land, that property, and come up with this wonderful vision, and the school consolidation is voted down, we don't have that. So, I think that that should be off the table as well, and I think you could just do your bullet points, three and four. And, you know, it doesn't, whether the school is there or not, you know, you, you do say may, which is great. But I think that that's also another very triggering goal, as has been articulated. And I think you can just come up with a vision, like, what do we want in the downtown? What do we want it to look like? And then you say, what, you know, what is the three A? Is what I'm hearing you saying, what is the three A? And then the school is gonna settle out. Either, either it's gonna pass or it's not gonna pass. And I would hate to have spent all this money on a plan that assumed that Winthrop was gonna be available and then have it, you know, not be available, cause the town votes, votes it down. So, I think we have to have that as a contingency.
What I think is important to remember is that Winthrop is a component of this, but not the key. It's not the centerpiece of this. The centerpiece of this is the downtown as a system, as a collection of relationships. That's the, that's the centerpiece of this. Three A was dumped in our lap, and Winthrop may or may not play into it. But to ignore Winthrop would be erroneous. To look at it flexibly, keeping a loose, you know, a loose framework around it, so that if it comes into play, you ha, you don't have to scramble to say, oh, my gosh, it's in play. What do we do now? We didn't think about this. That would be really short-sighted. But I agree, to let it be the centerpiece or the driver makes no sense. What should be the driver is a comprehensive look at downtown. And I agree, I stand corrected, not two buckets, three buckets. And then you overlay those, and it go, is going to tell a story, and it will remove so much of the.
Yes.
Stress and debate. The debate will be focused and factual and precise instead of a big messy stew, which is what it is right now.
Yeah. I was hoping Winthrop was included in this go, because I would, I was hoping the form-based code study would say, what an awesome place for elementary school, right next to the community house, right next to the park, right next to the town resources, and the kids can go tour the fire department like they just recently did.
That could be part of, that could be part of that bucket.
But not because it may become available, but again, that, that may be a separate bucket, if anything.
So, so I would advocate for that, and there's no reason why, you know, the, the committee, you know, can't look at that and, and direct UTIL in that manner.
Yes, please.
Beth, do you have any comments?
No, I think I agree with the, sorry, with the multiple bucket approach. And I just think that will make it a little bit clearer for mainly the, the residents of town to be able to make an informed decision as things move forward. And like Jonathan said, maybe it's really clear, and they do really dovetail nicely, and maybe they don't. But I think the separate buckets approach will, will definitely make for, I think, a clearer discussion, more transparent discussion.
I mean, I will say, I think it's, it was obvious to me when we had a meeting with UTIL that they understand that, that these are individual problems that have to be dealt with. And the idea is to look at all of the, all of the challenges, rather than ignore some that may or may not happen. Look at the whole, look at the big picture on this, and I think that.
I think you heard from us, Amel. I don't know if there's a reason to.
Yeah.
Argue it.
Patrick.
The town manager is considering, and I know he discussed this with one of the select board members today, the possibility of having a public forum. I believe the, the date was June the twelfth. And it's largely to help people understand, here's where we're at. A lot of these things aren't the town's doing. Other, but they're things that we need to address. And let's start out with what we do know and put that on the table so everyone's aware. Right now, I'm given to understand there's a great deal of misinformation and, you know, conspiracies, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's, it's really important to make sure that we get people level set and understanding actually where we are. So it's, it's really important to make sure that we get people level-set and understanding actually where we are, rather than where we fully end up being. And, you know, it's important to make people understand too, look, there are no done deals here. The only done deals are those that are gonna go to town meeting, for which they're going to be voting a point.
So the only thing I'd like to add here is, in my opinion, it, what I just said doesn't change the content of what's being presented. It just changes how it's organized, that's all it does. It's the same content, it's the same subjects, you're not removing any of the subjects, you're just reframing them.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent with that, and, you know, that's.
Yep.
So if you want to know what the intent was, it was not to stir up any antagonism or any, create any, and words do matter, and we were pretty careful, careful to come up with wording that was as soft as possible.
So I just wanna thank you for the work you've done, and because I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just very sensitive to what's coming at me from people and the questions. So I'm hyper-aware of what is probably gonna come and be asked of me. So that's just, I just wanted to say that. So this isn't me against you, this is me wanting to understand, because I have a lot of other people who are asking questions.
Sure. No, I suspect the first meeting we're gonna have with the advisory committee, because we haven't met, I haven't met any of them actually, don't know them. But will be, what is your, what's your worst fear in this whole process? And what do you really hope to do here in town? So, so that, I mean, that will start, start the com, the, the conversation we're gonna have with the town. This is, there's gonna be a lot of information that has to come out, nothing is settled at this point, I want to make that clear. There is no, I have no bias, to be honest, I have my own opinions about three A, and.
Well, and I think the more we can say those things in a meeting like this, that people are gonna be watching, or maybe watching now, kinda like Patrick referred, had said earlier, I think the better, because we want them to know that we're trying to be transparent, and anyways, that, yeah.
Yeah, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering, just, I have just two comments. One is, so those four bullet points, based on the discussion that we had, will those four bullet points be changed? If that's gonna be a document that's gonna be in the public purview? Because we just, I think the census, the consensus was the first two bullet points were a little bit triggering in how they were written, so I'm just, wanna just, if those can be rephrased or something, I think that's great. I'm not on the committee, so thank you for just allowing me to speak, I should have always started with that, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. The second thing is, I'm just feeling a little triggered by something you just said, Patrick, about conspiracies this and conspiracies that. And I just feel like that's a little gaslighting, because I was just at that meeting on Monday, and just asked, I just asked simple questions, like, when was the lease renewed for five years? Who asked for five years? Why was it five years, right? And those shouldn't be triggering questions, but those are critical, because the school building committee made a decision based on the fact that Winthrop lease was only renewed for five years. So, so that's not a conspiracy, it is, it is, it's not a theory. It, it, it's a direct cause and effect, right? So, so we have to just be really careful, that the questions that are being asked now are to try to get the transparency, to understand, like, when people make decisions to vote for something or not vote for something, what's driving that decision? And as we're digging into it, we're realizing, in this specific situation with the school building committee, like, the motive to have a consolidated school and get rid of Winthrop has been around for years, and this became an easy path to do it. And it became kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy. And for those people who weren't involved two years ago, to, to sort of be groomed in this direction, you know, we're coming in now, and we're just trying to get our minds around the fact that it's a, it's a, it's a pre-expected, you know, conclusion, that of course Winthrop's gonna be consolidated, of course it's gonna be a mega school at Cutler, and, and of course that's gonna be developed, and of course we're gonna put seven hundred units, and there's just all these things that's kind of like snowballed. And, and that's not a conspiracy, that's fact. So we're just trying to deal with fact, and understand, like, what motivates decisions. And I think that's just really, really important. So when we say compliance efforts within, you know, has a deadline, well, the school committee, or the select board on Monday said that they're gonna waive that, you know, that they're not gonna do that. And I think there's a whole group of people, and there's a, there's a lawsuit that says we're not gonna comply. So that's why I think language is so important, and we just want to weave that in, and, and just respect the different motives. Like, I think we were saying, you know, some people want it, some people don't want it, and that's the free market. But let's just not gaslight people by saying, you know, all these conspiracies and misinformation, because there's a lot of information that's actually coming out, that shows that there was a concerted effort to roll this school consolidation plan. So, just my opinion.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
I will take that to heart.
Yeah, and I just wanna say really quick, I think those words, conspiracy and misinformation, whether they're true or not, are divisive. And I feel like we're in a season where we really are trying not to be, there's a lot of reasons why we can divide. And I think true leadership is gonna help us not to divide. And if we can use, and we can disagree, but I think, like you had said, sometime, because those words kind of struck me a little bit too. And I just, I, I mean, and if I say those words, please tell me, because I'm not saying I have all the right words. I'm just saying, I think those could be divisive, I may some, say something that's, that seems divisive, and please correct me as well, because I really feel like we have an opportunity to lead the town, and do it in a way that we can have good discussion, good, robust discussion, and walk away, and still be kind and like each other. So, that's, I just wanted to jump off of that.
Thanks, we really have to move on, I, to the next side, I'm not, I'm not gonna bother finishing up this, everybody here has a copy of it. So, I'd just like to say, if anybody has comments on any of this, write it up for me, send it to me in red line, and you know, we'll take a look at it. And, you know, this was run by the selection committee, but there's no reason we cannot change it, if it's, if it's offensive to anybody. The, the only thing I'm gonna say here is that, at the beginning of this project, like any project you begin in planning or design, you gather information, and this was a response to UTIL, that said, what are the challenges you have? So we said, well, what are they out there? We wanted to include it, not ignore it, not just hide it. These are, these are challenges, and I know the words are important, but I thought the wording here was certainly not offensive, but I'm sort of, sort of surprised. But anyway, I, I'd like to move on, get off this topic at this stage.
So what's next? Next is, there's gonna be a notice for a meeting to kick off, or we're gonna get involved in the advisory board process selection, or we're not? Or what's the next step?
Well, the next step is, the, the list was developed of potentially fifteen people from, again, the broad spectrum within the community of known, known factors. I don't know, a couple were invited because they were opposed to the project, one or the other, or both, and the two contentious ones. And again, from other experiences or sensibilities, they were selected to be part, because they could contribute, I think, to, again, the first part of this, which is the, the most imaginative visioning part of it, and coming up with ideas, is what we want in the first couple of meetings, is ideas. They might all be great, or they might all be terrible, but that's what we're after, you know, in this, in this opening part, and that's why we want broad, we want a diversity of opinions, a diversity of experiences and so forth. And I think we can go forward. UTIL will take that, you know, into account, and then they will come up with responses to that.
I think, yeah, because there's two advisory board meetings in the next advisory committee, so there's.
We're trying to get one in May, the worst case, it might slip to the first week in June, but we have to stick to the schedule if we're gonna meet the April deadline. Because it's, one year is really tight to do a project of this scale and complexity, so it's important that we just keep it, keep it moving. Let's go to the next item on the agenda. Bill is still not here, why don't we just cover the Bridge Street law, so we get, check that one off?
Yes, there was a concern that was specified to me, that the scenic road bylaw had been violated along those lots in the early, the westerly section of Bridge Street. I looked at that, I connected with counterparts, DPW director, assistant director, as well as the building commissioner, looked at right-of-way maps, et cetera. That section of right-of-way there is fifty feet in width. And what's important about the scenic road bylaw, and it's important in Massachusetts, because not only do we have historic buildings, we have historic roadways. We, we often don't think about them in those terms, but one A, that's the oldest highway in this country. Think of that.
Right.
And Bridge Street is very historic. Yeah. It was a, an indigenous population path, as it started. But, you know, Bridge Street is one of the thirteen scenic roads in town. And there's always a desire to protect those because of their character. A lot of times that character has a lot of stone walls, has mature vegetation, like, say, for instance, Asbury. And I do know that Bridge Street, in much of its length, has both stone walls, as well as some mature vegetation really close. But in this section, where there's a fifty-foot right-of-way, there were no walls. There have been some trees that appear to have been removed from time to time. They happen to be underneath the national grid overhead wires, from what I can see. So, you know, as we looked at the applicability of a violation of either removing trees and stone walls within that right-of-way, just, there was no, no documentation, no fact available that would allow us to, you know, pursue a violation for those properties. So, you know, as I, I discussed it with Bill, who had raised the consideration, he mentioned to me, he said, you know, what I was really after was the idea of having landscape and vegetation to soften the new masonry walls that had been constructed there on the lots. And I said, you know, I totally get it, my background is as a landscape architect, and I can tell you that if that property were mine, I know I'd be doing a lot with that wall. Particularly grown vines. So I did discuss it with the property developer. He said, they're doing a complete landscape plan for all of the, the lots individually over time. And they also will plant some vines along those masonry walls. So I guess I, I'm gonna have to keep an eye on it to make sure that it gets done, but he did reassure me that it would.
I noticed, Patrick, in the two thousand and four master plan, I didn't see anything in the current one being adopted. But under transportation, in the two thousand and four, it said, bylaw regulations, these are recommendations in transportation, establish a scenic corridor overlay district along key, local key roads, or key local roads, in order to minimize the potential for adverse impacts on roadside, open space, agricultural features, and mature vegetation. Within the scenic corridor district, modify the zoning bylaws existing, reduce frontage provisions to require conservation restriction over open space at the road. I mean, I don't know if the town ever considered that, this was back in two thousand and four, and decided against it, do you have any history on that?
I have no history, I came in two thousand and fourteen.
Okay.
There hasn't even been a discussion
Okay.
relative to that.
It's not in the current master plan, but
Right.
I mean, there was, it was considered at one point to be extended beyond the right-of-way then, you know, the coverage, the protective coverage. Anybody have any comments on, on that? So is Bill satisfied?
Seemed to be.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the board to begin review of the master plan document. Again, unfortunately, Marty is not here, but she encouraged the planning board to, because she was involved in, of course, in the steering committee, from about the halfway point to the end. When she became chairman, she joined that board, or that commission. So she's been involved in this, and what she said to me was that the steering committee has been disbanded at this stage, they've completed their work, and they are done. We've been asked to review this, and what Marty said, and she can reiterate, we're not gonna take any action on this tonight, but what, what she asked me to do was just to introduce this, have people read it in advance, and again, if there's anything in here, just redline it, so that she can look at it when it comes back. We're gonna have to make our own edits, if we are gonna make any changes to it, to vote on anything. But I, I said I'd just bring up the topics and see if there's any outstanding issues here that people think are really important, that are, that are missing. But her, her advice was, at this stage, we're not gonna rewrite this master plan, nor should we. But what we need to do is just, she said, correct errors, if you see anything that is just simply wrong on it, make a note of it, that can get corrected, that can get fixed before this goes to publication, so.
Amel, I
Final approval.
I, I read it in detail and found a bunch of things wrong and missing.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to discuss that in general, or, some of the themes are similar
Yeah.
to what we just went through, I think there was some copy and paste language.
Yeah.
When you look at the implementation plan
Yeah.
is like, one thing that drove me crazy, it made me quit my plans for tonight to come here. I think it's like, this is definitely not something that was there to review, it's something that someone recently wrote in. And I think we need to address it specifically, one A and one C.
We don't have, I don't have that page in my packet.
It should be at the back, it's like, oh, not in the packet, this was in the email.
Yeah, I don't have my email.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I went through the, I went through the document in detail.
No, we have part of it, I'm just saying we're missing that one.
This also missed plan, it missed the maps, it didn't have the maps attached, it didn't have a lot of the other information attached, but I also questioned the timing of it, it seems like a strange time to develop a plan when all these, like, weather balloons are up. It almost seems like it should wait, and I don't know, like, it's never too early to plan, I know, but especially when you're talking about a goal to develop Winthrop and comply with three A, I think it's, it's a plan that's not well crafted. It doesn't address drinking water, it, it addresses drinking water capacity, but not quality. There's like, a lot of things, it's like, there's a huge amount, there's like pages and pages and pages on some topics,
Yeah.
and then a paragraph on education. There's goals and goals and goals around additional housing capacity, density, but no goals around education, when the majority of the town are single-family homes with kids, you know, it's, the majority is not represented in the plan clearly, in how the goals are written, or in the topics they address, to the detail they address them. To have just one single paragraph around water and education is, is it, it shows clearly where historically, maybe, the town has put resource and energy towards, and I think now is an opportunity to expand where that resource and energy goes. There's a goal in there outlining carbon neutral, uh, uh, carbon neutrality in two thousand and forty, but there's zero in the plan to say, we're working on this, that, or the other thing to get there. I think it's a great goal, I think it's a fantastic goal, but I would I think it's a great goal, I think it's a fantastic goal, but I would love to see some implementation plans around achieving that, one being a greenhouse gas inventory, like first figure out what you got, and then figure, but there's like, I know they don't wanna recraft it now, but I just wanna say that it is not something that we're gonna do in one, or two, or three, or four. You know, think about how many times we talked about the stormwater bylaw, here's a master plan. I think it's, 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 it needs like, a committee of people to look at still, before it gets teed up for our review for vote, it's like miles away from a vote.
Yeah, I, I can't disagree with that, I know, Patrick, I think our charge at this stage, I don't know, maybe you have some comments on that.
You know, I do think that there's definitely some improvements that it could be benefited by. However, I can tell you that the water situation, you know, is something that within the last two years has been a very different change of focus. And even in item number eight, 8A, discusses working with neighboring communities regarding attaining long-term water supplies. This is something that the town has been working with Senator Tar, Representative Castner, for as long as she's been in office, and with him for the last two years. So I, I do know that that has been a very, it's actually been a new focus because it wasn't a possibility before. And in that same amount of time, it's been discovered that our water quality is certainly in need of significant improvement, which makes this regional approach to attaining water through the Salem Beverly Water Resources Board to be a much more attainable and more quality-oriented possibility. So, you know, that's definitely something that got built into here in the latter part of this three-year effort.
Are we required to update the plan this year? Is there, what, what is the driver for doing this now?
Well, it got pushed because the prior one was finished in two thousand and five.
Yeah.
So, you know, twenty years is a good time horizon within which to, you know, to focus on it. But I absolutely think it's better to do it right than to do it quickly. Three years isn't quickly, but we did have a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, a lot of working through items. But I definitely think that there's certainly items here that need to be improved greatly. One of, one of the items on my list is that they refer to a Habitat for Humanity project underneath a photograph that they took of Canterbury.
Oh, see.
So, you know, there's some simple things and some more substance-related things.
Well, I think we need to come up with some way to, you know, see in what ways we can still make positive comments. I know Jonathan has some questions too, criticisms of the document, and, well, why don't you go ahead and say that, and I'll.
Okay, I would agree with all the comments so far, and an even larger overarching comment that I have, and I know sometimes it's endemic to master plans, but it doesn't need to be, and that is all of the key issues and the implementation, all living in fragments and nothing connected. I see one, or maybe two notes in the implementation section that says this is related to something else. It should be everywhere, everything is related virtually in here. And so I would agree that if there's not a deadline or a penalty for adopting this, I think the town would be well-served to tune this up.
I, you know, it's, I'm gonna defer to Marty, since she's been part of this, you know, has been on that committee, and to the next meeting. Again, I, I am frustrated by, by the results as well, and and the town has gone through, you know, two consultants to get this done, and, you know, both, both were a challenge in some respect, and.
If we wanna take a divide and conquer approach, I'm, I'm, I will volunteer some time towards.
Well.
Certainly like, infrastructure-related, like the town water supply, that, the comments I made around carbon neutrality and, and some of the other things, I would be, if, if we wanna all like chop up pieces.
I think that there's enough skills on the planning board to make significant improvements to this, if the town is receptive to that, and the, and the committee is receptive to that. I would be willing to participate in an effort like that as well.
Yeah, I mean, the steering committee has been disbanded, as I mentioned before, so it would fall on us to do the editing or the, you know, the writing on it, which is, which is fine, we've done that before.
As far as a deadline goes, that's a different question.
Yeah, I, I think, I think from Marty's standpoint, she would like to see, rather than go item by item and, and debate each one of these fully, anything that can be done in writing in advance that we can all look at would really be appreciated, because, you know, and you can take your topics and even if you don't have an answer, just comment, this could be done better, and, or done differently to be, to be clearer, or whatever. I think, I think redlining this is gonna be the best thing we can do at this stage, and then I'll, we'll let the chair deal with this when she's back, and again, just deferring to her because she's been part of that steering committee.
Right.
And.
That makes sense.
Yeah, she shared some of her frustrations too, with me. So Pat, you know, just whatever you can put together on, Pat Norton, put together on your, you know, that you wanna redline, or that would be useful.
Yeah, redlines are more useful than comments.
Yeah, yeah.
I hate getting comments on a document, I always love people writing in what they mean to say.
Yeah, yeah. And all we have, I have not seen any of the maps yet, and.
They weren't attached in the version I got.
I don't know, do you have those, Patrick, at home?
Yeah, I do.
You do now, okay.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
Probably has a big file to send, maybe, I don't know, but all the existing conditions, which were the front part of that, are really sort of a mixed value, so.
Yeah, it was interesting, it read almost like a inventory report than a plan.
Yeah, yeah. It was not a dynamic, and the problem, well, I don't wanna complain, but this is a, this is a document that looks backwards more than forwards, and well, I don't wanna discuss anymore on this.
I did love the, this first page was good. This has probably been around forever and ever, it's probably something Patrick wrote.
No, I wrote that first page.
I'm gonna take it. Like, if you had, if you had written this in the form-based code goals, I would have petted you on the back.
It's the same, it's the same degree of, same degree of whatever. No, I, that, that was the one thing they took from my participation on that, to divide it up into provide, protect, and grow.
I thought it was good.
It is a good way to organize it, and it's, and it's more meaningful to the people in town because they can understand packages of, and it relates to what Jonathan said too, that everything is interrelated, and that economic development doesn't exist in a vacuum or in a silo, you know, no disconservation, or, or any of the public facilities that the town has. So, everything is interconnected, a much more difficult document to write, but this could have been, well, okay. So maybe, the next meeting is on the twenty-first of May, and if you can have something redlined to Marty through Patrick, that would be great, I'll do what I can on this too. Yeah, we're back on Tuesday.
Are we gonna, are we talking about agenda, could we, are we adding the rules and regs to that? And you probably punted on that tonight, because you thought I was gonna be here.
Yeah, we punted on that tonight, so if.
We can add that if Alex is gonna be, you mean on Stormwater?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just the last remaining.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we were waiting for you to come back on that, and, and Alex, when he's ready. We'll put that on the agenda for the next time.
So, master plan.
Last item, I don't know. Any other comments from audience? Yes, ma'am.
At that meeting, the town manager said, as has been referenced already, that the town wouldn't be ready to make a decision on the 3A amendment in time for the deadline, but it would take four extra months. And I'm just like, is, can we do that? Are we penalized? What happens if we don't meet the deadline? And I, I would like that answered, because I don't know, can we say we won't meet the deadline?
Well, Patrick, do you wanna?
It's likely that we will not meet it. But what we want to be doing is showing to the state that we're working toward understanding it, to public engagement regarding it, and considering how it could best fit our community. And there are a lot of variables to that, as we've heard tonight, and you're certainly aware of, so you know, it's a, it's a big topic, it wasn't something we've created, something we wanted. To me, it's an anathema, it's worse than forty B.
Yeah, they.
And, you know, but, you know, I think there are definitely going to be costs to the community, and we need to understand that, to your point. The town manager told us today that he was going to have town council prepare a list of the kinds of things that would likely be at risk.
Local control.
So, that's important to have.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you, you were in, exactly. And more information is better. So, it's important to understand what effect will likely take place or could take place over time, so it's all part of educating ourselves on how to make the best decisions that fit our community.
And, and also, isn't it true that there's a decision this, coming up this fall, whether or not this is even constitutional and able to be a law? And second, it's also been something that a deadline has been postponed more than once in the past? Right?
Yes, that's true.
On this implementation, so not that we're banking on that.
October, the Milton case is gonna be heard by the judicial, SJC, so. And I also know that the Rock, that case out of Rockport, there's actually a federal and a state case out of Rockport, so there's a lot of different things flying around, so.
So there are towns that have turned it down.
Yes.
Marblehead, and there's a lot of towns, so I don't, I don't think, I think that this is a, do you comply or do you not comply? Like, this is our moment to be a town.
That's right.
And, and, you know, take, take what's good from, any ideas from the state, but also hold our ground as a former role, and not seek that, I think this is important, especially from a planning perspective, like you have that. Not against development, I just think we have to do it the way we wanna do it, not.
Yeah, a lot of the comment in the Monday meeting, I think from the board primarily, was they, they were reiterating the fact that they're not pro 3A, but no one was comfortable to say they were against it, or to say that they could agree it was bad for the town. And I, for one, again, given my exposure to it, would be comfortable to say like, this is bad for the town. It's, I am not pro 3, I'm, I wouldn't say I'm not pro, I would say that I'm definitely against the idea.
I'm with you.
I don't know why we're averse to stating that in public, that we are against something and agree, I mean, it's up to us to do the research and understand and know what the impact of the law might be, but I don't know why we are adverse to saying that we're against it. I think we should be able to say that we're against it, you didn't wanna share your opinion before, but I think we should share our opinion, we're voted to be here to share our opinion.
I would, I'd like to just repeat something I said before, which is that until you understand the relationship between the patterns that are created in these three buckets, it's, it's a bit premature to say you're against it or for it. You might be against fifty percent of it, you might be against seventy-five percent of it, you might only be against, against twenty percent of it. Depends upon what this, you know, what if, what if the, the ultimate form-based code showed you that you could get to sixty percent compliance with 3A, not by the state forcing you, but by you forging ahead with a positive vision that everybody embraced in the town, and you got sixty percent there, wouldn't that be a good outcome? And you could present that to the state, look, I got sixty percent of their, way there, I did an alternative analysis, that last forty percent, if I do this, and I'm making up numbers, it could be nothing. But you don't know that yet, you don't know that yet.
I know how laws work, and I've been part of a permitting process.
Nobody wants to be forced to do anything, nobody's suggesting you forced to be forced to do anything. All we're suggesting here is that you look at the data, overlay the data, and see what it tells you. See what story it tells you, you might be afraid of the story it might tell you, but until you see that story, it's premature.
I think the, the, the important distinction to make, though, with what you're saying is, I don't need 3A to do that. I need.
I know you don't need anybody to force you.
I need form-based code to inform that process, 3A is a law, you can comply or not with.
Yes.
It's not like you go to the state, it's not like you get pulled over and you say, well, I've only had three drinks, it doesn't matter. It's like what you blow, so it's, it's not a, I comply, or, it's, it's not like, oh, maybe it's okay if we just somewhat.
Here's a way to think of it.
Do it, or you don't.
Here's a way to think of it, instead of thinking of it as a binary process, and this is how I'm approaching it. You either comply or you don't comply, and it's a number, it's a hard and fast number. I make my living breaking rules every single day, and the way I do it is, I have to go through, I sit on the other side of the table for regulatory processes, and I break, break the letter of the law every day. And the way I do it is I figure out what's the intent of this thing, and then I design to the intent. And sometimes I go, I, I exceed the performance standard, but if I was forced to hit that performance standard and just jammed it into the design, it'd be a catastrophe. Instead, I look at what the intent is, I design to it, and I exceed it, and then I exceed what the goals were. Not, nobody's forced to do anything, we got all the benefits of it. That's a different, that's standing the process on its head, I do it all, every day, all day.
With the design review.
The town has, the town has a, a, a potential here to test that out, see where they get. If they get nowhere, vote it down with authority.
I normally am.
With authority, after you know the, after you know the data.
I'm normally as optimistic as you are, but a, a, a design review board and going through that process is much different than going in front of the state, the DEP, or anyone else. It's not a, it's not a break-the-law situation, it's a, it's a black and white world that the DEP and a lot of state regulations live in, and I, I'm not discount, you, you're, you're brilliant, everything that you're saying is correct, but it's, it's not in the context of how I feel, how I feel about 3A and its intent. And, and I think it's important that the town decide soon, the town and the people representing.
What I would urge you to do is to prove that you're correct, prove you are correct.
And I would love to, as part of that process.
That's all, just prove you're correct, and then, and then reject it with authority.
Yeah.
So, and I, I think, I'm just gonna put my two cents in, 'cause I can. I think that we've only gotten twenty-eight thousand dollars from any of these grants. Yes. That small amount of money, I've been tracking this for quite some time, and I've gone and heard other towns and done a lot of research. Other towns get hundreds of thousands of dollars, or millions of dollars every year. For me, I hear what you're saying, Jonathan, I also say there's a huge downside risk financially for the town if we ended up having our school population dramatically, I mean, there's no limit to the number of occupants and no limit to the number of bedrooms. I mean, there's no limit to the number of occupants and no limit to the number of bedrooms. So even if you do one kid per unit, that's fifteen million dollars more for our school budget. We're getting twenty-eight thousand dollars. For me, I don't know if I necessarily need to go through that whole process 'cause it's, if they have five bedrooms and there's four kids per unit, like, I don't know how the town survives it. And I might, somebody can like correct me and I'm happy to have misunderstood. But like, those are the kind of questions I'm hearing from people. Those are the kind of questions I'm asking myself. Those are the things I'm saying. I need a common sense approach to this. How much are we giving up and how much are we risking or gaining? We might be gaining a net positive income from that property or we might be gaining a net negative. I have yet to see any financial forecast that makes me feel like it's worth the risk because I'm seeing net negative revenue off of that.
Has anybody asked the, the finance and advisory board to do an analysis on any of this? Has anyone reached out to them?
I think, uh, John McGrath just is starting to dive into understanding.
Because that's, that's how our town is supposed to work. They're, they're co-equal, the finance committee is co-equal to the select board, but they are independent. They don't need the select board's permission or your permission or anyone's permission to do whatever they want. And I know that because I was on for two appointments and that's what we did and that's how we, we managed ourselves and it was, uh, it was good.
Yeah, I believe they are going through the process.
And that would be part of the story that you would look at and analyze. And then you'd have that data in front of you and then you would either reject it or, or accept pieces of it or none of it or all of it with data.
It's all fact-finding. And, and as a matter of fact, uh, Mr. McGrath was part of that meeting today.
Oh, good.
Okay.
So, so I have no opinion.
No, let me just say that.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna state that strongly, no opinion.
Just, just for the record, it's never a good idea if anybody on a board that can vote, a planning board especially, should offer an opinion. You just come across as predetermined and eventually it could come back and bite you, uh, from the public, you know, I, I think.
What is voting?
When you have the data.
When you have the data.
Voting is giving your opinion?
Yeah, but when you have the data. This is just, you, the idea of being predetermined in, in a situation is n- not a good position for.
There's, the law is the law. It's written already. I don't know what data you need. The law is written. It's written and it's, 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 it's a legal document. And I'm saying I'm opposed to the legal document. I'm not saying whether or not it's good for the, or bad for this town. There's a legal document. You can read it. And that is what the law is.
Okay, as long as you're not saying I'm voting against it, you know, that's all.
You're not voting for or against three A. It's the zoning we're voting on.
Right.
Three A is bad legislature. It's a bad law.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think there is data out there, right, with, uh, with Salem. You know, they, they went and they built all their units and they get a conditional, um, acceptance, which means that they can change the guidelines at any time and then they're out of compliance. And so that's the problem with like having, I, I think it's great to think about like what kind of housing do we wanna have and like overlay a district for that, right? But the problem with the three A, as I understand it, is it's, is it's this way. Like, it has to be a certain amount of zoning and it's these guidelines for this kinds of, and it basically gives control to the state. And I think as a planning board, you all should be against giving control of zoning to someone other than the town. That's why I would support having that opinion being, because it's not about being against housing or being against, you know, development or anything like that. It's about giving control to the state because they say so. Like, they're basically forcing you to change your zoning to their requirement based on guidelines that they can change. And I think that's, that's a big concern from a planning perspective. And I, I appreciate hearing people saying, I'm not just gonna comply because I've been told to. Like, let's, let's realize that we have some authority as residents in this town with home rule and there's lawyers that are fighting it. And there's videos of, um, presentations that, you know, we can share. Um, if, if you want, if you're interested, you know, where they're actually talking about the law and they're looking at where it's unconstitutional. And I think that can fortify us to, to stand and push back and then decide what do we want our plan to be for downtown. And yeah, you know, we might put in some multifamily housing, but we would control that as opposed to acquiescing to what the state is dictating. Cause I think that's a, that's a huge risk to our town. We lose control of our downtown.
That's the biggest risk, I think, is when, um, it's a, it's a form of usurping our power. And when they take over the functions of a planning board, um, which is elected, that's disenfranchising the voters. So that's where I have a big problem. I'm, I'm, I have a passion for democracy, as someone once said, but that's really how I feel. I think we need to pay attention.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. Uh, board business is the next item and it looks like we have two minutes available. Uh, Patrick, is that right?
That's correct. Our last meeting as well as, uh,
One ten.
January tenth of twenty twenty-three.
Now, I think Marnie said she did not review the, but, um, it was, it was a shortened meeting because of the executive session. But the twenty-ten, do you wanna take that one first?
Sure.
Everybody have a copy and read it? The only comment, they misspelled Bill Wheaton's name.
It's Bill this time, huh? Not Jonathan.
No, it's not. Uh, just, just above the last vote there, um, M. Crouch read the declaration to enter executive session. W. Wheaton's, that's the only thing I picked up on that. Any other comments? And anybody wanna make a recommendation or a motion to, uh, to approve the minutes with that change?
Make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes noted.
Second.
Any discussion? Um, I'll read the, I'll read the roll so you can vote. Um, Darcy Dale.
I was not here and therefore cannot vote.
Abstain. Uh, Beth Herr.
Aye.
Pat Norton.
Aye.
Jonathan Poor.
Aye.
Bill Wheaton's not here. Uh, Chair, Amel Donquist, uh, aye. Matt, I'm gonna appoint you in the absence of Marnie Crouch to, if you were at that, were you at that?
Yes, Amel, I'm just checking the.
You were not there.
It doesn't look like I was at this one.
Okay, so you're not eligible to vote on that one. But I'm gonna appoint you anyway for the next, um, uh, the next minutes.
Sure.
Thank you. So I get one of, one abstain, uh, and four in favor. And Bill Wheaton is absent, so.
Four members would be a quorum.
It was a quorum, yeah, okay. So, motion approved, that was accepted. And the next minutes were, um, April eighteen, twenty twenty-four, our last meeting.
I found a typo. It's on, um, the last page, um, board business. There are no updates on Gordon Cromwell. It should read Conwell.
Yep. Great.
I didn't know if on the bottom of the first page where it says that, um, Matt voted in place of Darcy, if there needed clarification or just take out in place of Darcy. Cause that, it, we don't really explain why in place of Darcy. She just got appointed to the board because of the vote. So I don't know if that's significant or not, but.
Yeah, I read that and I didn't, um, I didn't know if a clarification's necessary for that, but, um.
I, I just, I'm just saying that. I don't really feel strongly. I just.
Also under board reorganization, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. Darcy, you agreed to being the representative to the community preservation committee.
Yes.
Not the conservation commission. So, yeah, that was a.
Didn't see that one.
Oh, was it community pres- oh, I thought it was a.
This says CPC.
CPC, yeah.
Community Preservation Committee.
And while we're on it, I have just one more typo, uh, the call to order. Darcy, it looks like your name is spelled wrong.
D-A-R-C-Y.
The call to order after.
Says Darch.
Says Darch, yeah.
Uh, I see that corrected here on mine.
Oh, really?
Darcy Dale under call.
Yeah, mine's correct.
Yeah, mine's correct.
No, mine is.
And also board reorganization, I see community preservation committee.
Okay, I might, I might have a, an older version.
Oh, yeah, I have.
So, yeah, some of you have. Uh, both of those have been corrected, but this, um, but the Conwell had not been, oops, somebody leaving in the back there.
I think she's just using the bathroom probably.
So I could, and vote to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes of April eighteen, twenty twenty-four.
So moved?
Second.
Any comments?
Nope.
Okay, all, anyone in favor just acknowledge by saying aye.
Aye.
Darcy Dale.
Aye.
Beth Herr.
Aye.
Patrick Norton.
Aye.
Jonathan Poor.
Aye.
And Amel Donquist and Matt Hamill, you were a part of that.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, any other?
Oh, there's a comment online.
Okay.
That a lower percentage of development will be, oh. Just what makes you feel that a lower percentage of development will be accepted by the state and is there a precedent anywhere else? I think that was just referring to like the sixty percent that John.
Yeah, I, I, that's not a legal, um, uh, compliance, but if you were, if, if this devolved into debates with the state, you know, or, or lawsuits and you showed that you did everything you could to, to plan smartly and, and exhaust your alternatives analysis, you're in a good place legally.
Yeah.
Yes, that's pretty much, that's, that's the high road, yes.
Right.
And if I have an opinion, there it is, right there.
It's a good one.
The high road.
I would love to take the high, I just, maybe I'm, I have different experiences.
And, and I have great experiences with taking the high road. I'd love to entertain you, Pat, with those sometime.
All right, not at a, not at one of our meetings.
Nope.
Maybe it's an architect versus engineer discussion.
Okay, um, there being no further board business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Beth Herr, second by Darcy. All in favor? Just do a aye.
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 Thanks, Amel.